Please join the collective leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to mention that Ruth Hatcher is absent tonight. She broke her arm on the way back from vacation and David will be serving as the chair for the night.
Chair.
Okay. Yeah, here. Are the speakers on down there? They didn't hear any outside. No, no. Nobody heard anything. Can you hear that?
Yes.
Yes? John, can you hear that? Okay. What I said was, please keep Ruth in your thoughts. She broke her arm on the way back from vacation and she'll be absent tonight, but David Brandenburg will serve as the chair for the meeting.
Okay. First up is celebrating success.
Yes, Ash? Hello?
Hello.
Hello.
I was led astray by somebody who was here. We tried to celebrate. We're going to do a task called celebrating success and it's an opportunity for us to recognize our employees who go above and beyond in their service to the POA and the membership. We have the opportunity of doing that tonight and I'm going to call Rick Epples forward. He's going to make a presentation to Mr. Bob Walker if he can come for it as well.
Bob is receiving his second of these awards. We tried to spread them around, but I really felt like this was really worthy of a second award. At approximately 12:15 PM on December 11th of last year, Bob Walker was making his normal rounds as lake ranger at the Lake Avalon Boat Round when he noticed smoke coming from the grassy area on the hill across the lake. He drove to the location while dialing 911 to report a fire. He had to persist and call a second time because there was some confusion about a prescribed burn going on that day. While waiting for the arrival of the fire team, he knocked on the door of a home in the path of the fire and found no one to be at home. His attention and quick action prevented loss of property and is why he is worthy of celebrating success.
I think he's building a wing to house all his trophies.
I like doing this because our employees are what make Bill and Mr. a special place to be. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings and we have a little item to attend to before that.
So we have a walk-in memo. At the December regular meeting, a motion was made and an amendment was made to that motion. The board voted on the amendment, but failed to vote on the amended motion. So you could make an argument that, you know, no action was truly taken. We are recommending that the board kind of step back, redo the whole thing again because that way we can make sure it's done right. This is regarding the Scottsdale Bridge for $38,000. The amendment was to ask that the funding for this come out of the operating budget, which management supports. But so what we are encouraging the board to do is to make the motion all over again for the amendment to be made, a vote to be taken on the amendment, and a vote to be taken on the amended motion.
Okay. Who will make the motion, the original motion? Steven?
Are we making the original motion?
Original motion.
I'm the motion.
Second?
I recommend that you, we just start all the way from the beginning and redo the whole thing. You could make an argument that we should just make, have a motion on the, or have a vote on the amended motion, but I think it's a cleaner to just do the whole process again.
So I make a motion to approve the 2020 capital project for $38,000, which will be used towards the development of engineering plans and permitting for the flood damaged bridges at Scottsdale Golf Course.
Second?
Second.
Now, Steven, you wish to make an amendment to that motion. Would you read that, please?
I make a motion to amend the original motion to stipulate that the funds for the capital project will come from cuts made to the operating budget.
Okay. Do we have a second for that? Jerry? Okay. We talked it out. We know what we want to do. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to the motion. Okay. All opposed? Jerry's opposed and I'm opposed. Ruth is voting in favor, the way it originally was. Okay, now we will vote on the amended motion. No discussion? We'll vote. All in favor?
You need a first and a second on the amended motion.
We got that.
You just approved amending the motion. Now you need to read the amended motion, first and a second.
Okay. Who wants to read it? Want me to read it?
You can do that.
Okay. We have a motion to approve 2020 capital project for $38,000, which will be used towards the development of engineering plans and permitting for the flood damage bridges at Scottsdale Golf Course. The motion has been amended to stipulate that the funds for the capital project will come from cuts to the operating budget. There we have it. All in favor? Oh, excuse me. We need a second.
Second.
First and a second. Okay. Jerry? All in favor? Any opposed? No. Moving on. So David, you have Ruth's proxy? Yes. Got to raise both hands. Okay, moving on to the minutes from the meeting in question. The meeting, the minutes, as I have read them, are accurate according to what happened. So I think to discourage that, that we should go ahead and approve them because that's what actually happened. Your motion to approve the minutes. Jerry?
Second.
Second. Jim? Hearing no discussion, we'll vote on that. All in favor of approving? Second one is January 16th, work session meeting. I hear a motion to approve those amendments.
Second.
Mary? Second. Very over. Any discussion? All in favor of approval? Round and close. Okay. Tom or Doug, you want to report on an executive session held on January 1st?
An executive session was held by the board on January 9th, 2020. The board of directors approved PLA Resolution 2020-01, which has to do with the Armstrong derivative lawsuit. The board voted eight to zero to approve that resolution, 2020-01, with Chairperson Hatcher recusing herself from the entire executive session.
And that's that. Okay. Action report. Next up is the election committee. Tom? Ann?
I'm Tom Thorne, I'm chairman of the election committee and I have with me Ann Dahlke, who's a member of our committee. We're going to be drawing names to form the order of the ballot for the upcoming board election. First one is Joy Thomas Sawyer. Second is John Goodman Jr. Third is Janice Sims. Fourth is Sandy Fosdick. Fifth is David Brandenburg. Sixth is John, is it Hudec? Hudec. And the last one is Nancy Bunton. And that would be your order of ballot.
And Tom, to confirm that all of these candidates were confirmed by the election committee and that their 50 signatures were verified?
That is correct.
Also, if you could give us a report on the results of the election.
I'll have to get that info from you.
Just before that.
The election results were announced, I think it was January 16th.
Right.
The motion was, the ballot issue was approved. The yes votes were 9,857. No votes were 88, 32. Abstentions were 143. The numbers for the Class A votes, Class B votes were 13 affirmative. And we had 18,689 ballots cast, or votes cast. Any other information?
So you're confirming that we reached quorum?
Yes, we did reach quorum at 53%.
And that the measure was passed. And all of this information is available on POA's website under the committee section under the elections committee. You can review, you can see the official certification from the inspectors of election and you can also see the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Next up, we have the joint advisory committee reports. Lakes?
It appears that nobody is here for the Lakes Committee. I just want to make everybody aware that this Saturday at 9:00 AM in this room, the Rules and Regulations Committee will be meeting. The agenda and the packet for that meeting is available on the POA's website. The primary discussion for that meeting will be the recommendations that were issued to the, by the Lakes Committee regarding wake boats. So if you're interested in the wake boat issue, we encourage you to attend the meeting this Saturday, the 25th, at 9:00 AM here in the boardroom. And the meeting will also be live streamed.
Good evening. Gary Griffin, Chair for, Chair for the Recreation Committee. We had a meeting on January 15th and I'll give you some highlights from our landing reports. Branchwood, the pool was closed for a couple of weeks for maintenance and repairs. Tyree Park is in excellent condition given this time of year, you don't see too many people out there. Not seen any eagles or tib, that's about it. As far as RV storage, Lakehand Park facility looks good. Lakehand residents appreciated the warning about the water rise, the storms, they could take precautions in their appropriate docks and that kind of stuff, as well as the Christmas trees are coming. Go ahead, we dropped new stuff. Oh, one more thing? They'd like to have a plum toilet facility there at Lakehand. Let's see. Reardon Hall Complex and tennis, they reported the playgrounds clean, people were enjoying it and they were getting ready for a Valentine's Day dance as well. Buck Moemen is in good shape, a couple of maintenance things that need to be done. The dock park users are very happy with what transpired once we had to do the cleanup and get things set up the way it is right now and they liked how fast it was done as well. From the gun range's perspective, busy. They're both looking good at this time and it's been so popular, the classes that we've been doing that we started, we scheduled them in the winter this time and we've never done that in the winter. As far as Tannure Creek, Lake Avalon, good shape, always full of users, as well as Lake Avalon. Metfield Complex, London Park, generally they look good, two items need to be watched, which is the condition, but of course the men's bathroom, which is an ongoing thing, as well as some of the erosion in the playground based on some of the mulch. We do know that the both mini golf courses are rearing in Tannure and Metfield are a little bit run down, but we'll see what happens here in the future with those. The new business we had is the next welcome meet and greets March 7th and the haves of the 15th. We already had 15 people registered. And one thing that Rick pointed out, John Urquhart was complimented for conducting a gun class. On Saturday, despite the rains and the heavy weather that we had, he tried to call and cancel it and everybody wanted to come shoot. So they went out there in the freezing rain and I saw him the next day doing another concealed carry class. Our next meeting is February 10th at the Country Club at 4 o'clock. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is golf.
Jason Lloyd, Chairman of the Golf Committee. Highlights from our January 8th meeting. We're happy to report that less than 30% covered the stop. Scottsdale's open, all 18. They did some rerouting on hole number two and made hole number eight a par four. So we got that open temporarily that way while they're doing the work on the Holman Bridge. Golf Now has been a part of the POA marketing and how non-members can, can sign up for green fees and come play our beautiful courses. And during this, during the years, they send evaluations to the members of the website, of their website, Golf Now, of Golf Now to, to, what's the word I'm looking for, evaluate the golf courses. We're happy to say that Highlands is ranked number four in the state of Arkansas and Dogwood is ranked number five in the state of Arkansas. So that's, that's a pretty big deal. Golf rounds revenue, we did get reports this last meeting, they're working on the year ends and as soon as they're available, we'll put them up on the website under our meeting notes. But we did get, and I know it's a couple of months late behind how they release these numbers, but we did get national numbers and in the month of November, surprisingly, rounds were up nationally to almost 10%. And the way they bucket it, they bucket Arkansas, Louisiana, Mississippi together and those three states were up over 30% from the November last year. So hopefully we're getting, getting people back into golf around the country and the weather up soon, so. We're starting a new thing and every month, Daryl's going to give the committee a challenge topic. So the first one we're starting with is how to improve member rounds. So our next meeting is, that's pretty much going to be the foundation of the meetings going forward. We're going to do quick, quick course reports when they start back a couple different things. We're going to be talking about challenges and topics to do what the golf committee can do. So anybody, any member that wants to join and sit back and give us, and we encourage ideas, you can send email or email addresses on the website, send us some ideas to help continue to increase round. A couple more things real quick, reflective tape to help with the rangefinders. We're doing a test on Dogwood, so we're putting, they've put, I think a two-inch strip. Was it a two-inch strip, I think is what they put? Around the, around the flag, so it'll pick up the rangefinders about better. If it works out, it's a very, very expensive way to, to help rangefinders hit the cans. 2020 POA term schedule will be out at the end of February and last but not least, our next meeting is right here on February 12th at 8:30. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Up next, community involvement.
We actually started talking about tailgating fireflies. I believe we've actually set a date for June 20th and the rain date would be June 27th. We are still looking for volunteers to help, whether it's for tailgates or the voluntary time, with the community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Here comes Duane with the financial reports.
These are preliminary numbers, as I've said, the books haven't been closed, we'll have the books probably closed next week. So this is December year-to-date. And the financial reports included in this presentation are preliminary since we're still closing the year-end. Once the year-end is closed, all financial reports will be posted to the POA's website. This will be the POA gross profit is better by 236,000. Operating expenses are worse by $2,700,000 mainly due to stump dump. EBITDA is a negative $2,464,000. This is the same statements, but we're eliminating stump dump related expenses, one-time sales tower revenue and the gain on the arc mobile end. Looking at the EBITDA on this report, we're positive $144,000. We had a good year if it hadn't been for that stump dump. Water utility, gross profit is a negative 230 because of the rainy weather we've had all year, a lot of less sales. Operating expenses are better by 115 and gives the EBITDA at this point in time of negative $115,000. That's my report. Any questions?
And once the, the financials are ready, they'll be posted on the website, but right now because of the year-end, it's all preliminary.
David? Yeah, I'm looking for something on there. I guess I'm looking on the wrong page. Next up is the response to open forum. Normally, we don't respond, but there is one. We welcome comments from our property owners at open meetings. While we always listen, we do not usually respond to statements of opinion. That being said, when an opinion is correctly stated as fact, I feel we should correct the situation as best we can. Last month, an opinion was expressed that the POA had devalued every unimproved lot by selling 348 for $200 each. The statement that all baked lots would now have an assessed value of $200 thereby causing the loss of revenue for the city is incorrect. In checking several sources, I could not find any unimproved lots having assessed value below $3,000 for tax purposes. In the past year, we have sold around 700 lots in our inventory, many to have homes built on them. These are now revenue-producing lots, plus we don't have to pay real estate taxes on the double win. That being said, we will proceed to open forum and we're going to shake it up a little bit this time. We're going to go in reverse order just because the people at the end of the alphabet never get to go first. So that would be Sandy Fosdick.
Sandy Fosdick, 37, Stony in the lane. In regard to the comment that she just made, all that people have to do is contact the county, tell them what they paid for a lot and the county will adjust it. So that is a fact and I can bring it to you in writing if you'd like. Secondly, in listening to the city council work session and speaking to a city council member, I find out that we have already, we the POA have already given the city a licensing agreement for a new bike trail, the extension of the Razorback Trail. I'd like to know, first of all, why we, the POA members, have to hear about this from the city council, first of all. Second of all, from what I understand from the council member, this trail is going to be put right next to the golf course, Brittany Golf Course, on the same side of the street. Now, by trade, I'm a risk manager and so I cannot, in my wildest imaginations, figure out why you would do that. Put it on the other side of the street for Pete's sakes. And if that is not a fact of what you're planning to do, please correct me. And again, you're making major changes to our city and I know we can't vote on every single thing that goes on, but just as the original mountain bike trails was a major change to our city and should have been voted on by members, we just sent out two ballots for people. Could you not have put a notice on that ballot? I know there are many people, many people even here, highly in favor of the bike trails. I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't have them. Yes, our community is changing. I'm saying let the members, this is property owners association. If you look at the old material, the property owners are at the top of the chart. Then comes the board, then comes the general manager. We're not operating that way and I think it's wrong. So I say we're about to send out a ballot for board members. I suggest that you put it on the ballot. Do you want to do this with your common property? Yes or no? And if people speak and say yes, fine, I'm all for it. But I think the property owners deserve to have a voice in, in what's going on. So anybody want to answer why we're not finding out about this from you all?
Sandy, there was a public meeting last, near the end of last year, I don't remember the date. Yeah, there is.
There was a public meeting that this was being talked about.
There were plans presented, plus I believe, again, that somewhere in the information for the 2020 plan, it specifically stated that we won't go ahead with any more trails except for the Metfield Connector.
I don't believe it specifically said Metfield Connector, but I'm just saying, I've never seen a map that specifically showed where this trail was going. And there were 300 to 400 people at the meeting for bringing.
Sandy, we will comment on that after all, all the members have a chance.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, go Carol.
Uh, next, go Carol.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Okay, Michael Carroll. Michael Carroll. Suzanne Small.
I'm not very happy.
Naaman Street, please.
Suzanne Small, for Gretchen Line. And there's a whole bunch of seniors that's not very happy. You have increased our fees half again. And I know it's not your fault, but my townhouse has gone from fifty dollars a month from oh-six up to eighty dollars. So putting those together is a hundred-and-seventeen, which I'm gonna have to move because I can't afford that. And I don't think you're fun, you're using the funds wisely. Your general manager is getting two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars, which is more than Mike Pence gets. That's more than the mayor of New York gets. That's more than the, uh, uh, Supreme Court judge gets. And the other managers are getting four times what the respo, the normal is. And the general manager's getting eight times. And I'm not happy about the reboot. We voted it down. We voted eleven, eleven dollars down. Why would we increase it? Why would we vote for thirteen dollars? And I just think it's not right that you did a reboot. And you're, you paid thirty thousand dollars for the reboot and sent it off to California? Why not have one of the churches in the area count and give them the ten thousand dollars? And the stump dump, I don't know what to, two million dollars, that seems ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you for taking your time to express your feelings and opinions. Next item is... That's all looks left up. That's all. Anybody else?
Hi. We would already grabbed the sheet line up here, sorry.
Joy Sawyer, Dela Drive. Okay, just quick. I'm getting a lot of, um, messages since the vote. So at the special meeting, it was stated that there were last-minute voters, and that was delaying the, uh, start of the meeting. And folks wanna know if votes were allowed after five-thirty, um, because it looked like maybe people were voting as they came into the meeting, um, and how many of those votes. And there's just lots of speculation about that because of that statement, I guess, and because of, uh, overall lack of trust. Um, I'm also getting a lot of messages about the bonuses, because it was put on the P A website that bonuses were frozen. And, um, it was not stated whether those were indefinite or it was just until you could get the vote passed. So people are wondering if, uh, that is going to be, um, if part of this money that we're, you know, that we've given as, as a raise in assessments is gonna be used toward bonuses. So those are the, the two things that I've just gotten many, 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 many messages about this weekend. If you guys could address that, that'd be great.
Okay, is there more? Are there any other, if you're done?
Yes, are you not gonna answer your questions?
When we're done.
Okay, alright.
When there's nobody else.
Okay.
Uh, Mike?
Mike Ab, twelve East Elvington. I just wanted to voice my support for the Razorback Greenway extension to Metfield. I think it's an incredible connector that will tie in a large portion of the youth population in Bella Vista in order to be able to enjoy the amenities of Blowing Springs and connecting into Bent Hill and Crest of the trail infrastructure. I'm really excited to see that this is probably the first true, um, non-vehicular path that connects, um, amenities in Bella Vista. And I think a few years from now, we'll look back at the Greenway extension there and really applaud the effort of everybody to make it happen. And I urge everybody here to, uh, cast their vote in support of it.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else?
Yvonne Johnston, Wimbledon Way. I just wanted to give you my affirmation also for the trails. My doctor told me to start riding a bike because of arthritis, arthritis on my knee a couple months ago. I started doing it, and the health benefits are amazing, and I wanna keep doing it. It is difficult because so many of the trails are for bikers that are younger and stronger and healthier. And we're excited about the aspect of having something for seniors and connections where we could get to the other side, from the west side to the east side, and the grocery stores. I appreciate your help, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Rogers Cole, nineteen Gulf Drive. Those are, those are golf rounds because we don't oversee. I have a friend from Kansas City who literally come down with eight people. He calls everyone coming, he says, you don't have any grass on the fairways. We may come, and may. So I think we're using a lot of rounds because we don't oversee.
Anybody else?
John Goodman, Henworth Lane. And, um, just two questions, really. Uh, this last vote, in my personal opinion, which everyone has one, wasn't proper or ethical, in my opinion. And, and my personal view, it set a very dangerous precedent going forward. What it showed to the community is that by dividing one side against the other, anything can be passed. So my overall question is, now that this has been publicly made aware that that has what happened, are there measures in place to prevent this from happening in the future? Or can the residents of Bella Vista or property owners assume that every time this thing comes up, this is what we have to look forward to? Thank you.
Are there any more? Seeing none, we'll move on to response, Tom.
And what we're doing is, uh, to a certain extent, we're following the, uh, belief of the, uh, city in that they allow, uh, property owners to, uh, make comments, and then the mayor will, uh, respond. Not that I'm aligning myself with the mayor, but that's how they do it. Uh, with regards to, uh, the, uh, Blowing Springs Connector, uh, there was a meeting held, I think it was in March of last year, it may have been April, uh, and, uh, a map was presented at that time. Uh, that map has been available for quite a number of years. Also, the, uh, the documentation that was provided to the city was a draft version for their consideration. Uh, they, uh, the city discussed this at a meeting earlier this week. Appears that they may vote on it, uh, next week at their meeting. Uh, the board is, you know, I cannot speak for the board, but they are currently slated to discuss and potentially vote on this at their February meeting. I say potentially because I can't tell the board what to do, it's the board's decision. Uh, but that's, uh, currently, uh, being considered. With regards to the location of the Blowing Springs Connector Trail, uh, I can tell you that, uh, we utilize the services of Mr. Wachul. Who is a golf course architect, uh, placement of those trails. Uh, and we feel comfortable with those trails with regards to safety purposes. Uh, moving on, um, uh, the point was brought up regarding, uh, the voting after five-thirty. Uh, the voting, uh, the elections committee felt it was best to encourage as many votes, voters to participate as possible. Uh, the wording is encouraging, it uses the word "may". Uh, so the, the elections committee decided that it was best to accept those five additional votes that were cast after five-thirty. Uh, so, uh, those five additional votes did not have a statistical impact on the outcome, uh, but it did allow those additional property owners to participate in the vote. Uh, with regards to bonuses, uh, Ruth Hatcher put out a memo in November that stipulated that bonuses for senior staff would be suspended for an entire year. Uh, that remains in effect and does not change as a result of the outcome of the vote. And with regards to, uh, how future votes will be conducted, uh, that will be a decision made by future boards. Just a reminder that, uh, the board, uh, cannot seek an additional increase in the assessments for a minimum of three years. So, that will be a decision, and so who knows when the next vote would take place, whether it would be three years, ten years from now. Uh, but that ultimately will be a decision that will be made by that future board. And current boards, it's really challenging for current boards to enact restrictions that will restrict the actions of future boards.
Okay, thank you, Tom. The next item is, uh, just a report, a recap of a vote taken during the January work session meeting. We normally do not vote, just during the work session, we had a situation pop up that was urgent. And our golf course maintenance team discovered that another pier had been severely damaged on the Burksdale number eighteen bridge. It also appears that the bridge is sagging more. As a result of this new revelation, management has strongly recommended that we go forward with the removal of this bridge as quickly as possible. And by that, it means getting permits. We do not, if we do not act, it's possible the bridge could collapse in the next significant rainy minute. There's an estimate from Craftson Toll that was presented to us, an estimate of seventy-five thousand six hundred to remove the bridge. It's estimated with permitting time, it would take three months to have the bridge removed. Speaking with the county, the cost will get expensed at the time of the removal of the bridge. While our funds are very low at this time, there is possibly a cost savings if we had, um, taken out two abandoned bridges on Burksdale. We did not do that, we could save twenty thousand dollars. That was an option we did not pick. There's a copy of a letter attached by Certified Mail sent through Village Wastewater, which is not part of the city, it's not part of the Bella Vista P O A. It's a pre-standing corporation, placing them, them on notice to remove the sewer pipe connected to the bridge. We didn't want the sewer pipe going in the river. While it is highly unlikely that the P O A will replace the bridge with the new information and additional failing peers, we voted to proceed at the work session. That's just the report of what happened. So, that being said, we'll move on to the next item. A vote for us to approve the assessment increase that was just voted in by the membership to be effective March first. It'll be a thirteen-dollar per month increase for approved properties and no increase in monthly assessments for unapproved properties. Uh, do we have a motion?
David?
I make a motion to enact the, to, uh, the increase to monthly assessment for approved properties for twenty-four to thirty-seven dollars, with the increase going into effect March first, two thousand twenty, and to keep the monthly assessment for unapproved properties at sixteen dollars, as voted on and approved by the members of the special meeting on January sixteen, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Second? Mary Second. Is there any discussion?
David, I do have a, uh, question, I think, and I'm asking management especially. In November, we basically approved a pass budget and a fail budget. And we adopted the fail budget until this election last week. So, are we, do we need to review in our February meetings the pass budget? Or have we already adopted it?
So, uh, no, not, uh, right now, the budget that is in place is the fail budget. Until the board takes another vote, the fail budget is the budget, is the approved budget. Ruth has directed, uh, management, uh, to, uh, do a revised or new budget. Um, and what we are working, the guidelines we are working under right now are that we would have two months of fail, ten months of pass, um, and that any information that we now have that we did not have at the time that we wrote the budget, for example, Scoussdale Bridge, Burksdale Bridge, that's new information that we didn't have four months ago when we wrote the budget, uh, to incorporate that information. And also, uh, an additional change that was made, um, with the press release that was issued in November is that, uh, salaried employees, even with an assessment increase approved, would not be eligible for a salary increase for two thousand twenty. So we will incorporate that also, and we will bring it to, uh, the committee for, the board for their reviews and hopefully approval, approval. Uh, and that, that revised budget would be voted upon, potentially, at the February regular meeting, uh, so that it would go into effect before March one, which is when the assessment increase kicks in at the new fee schedule. So that's what our current plan is. Uh, but if we're in a little bit of a flux, uh, additional changes, the board may make additional changes to the budget. But that's what we're, the guidelines that we've, uh, we are operating under right now. Does that answer your question?
It sure does, and I'm assuming we're, uh, not twelve months, but we would be following the, uh, two thousand twenty plan guidelines that were submitted to the community for a ten-month period, which means you'll be going with the fail and some other information that has come about in January, February, but then hopefully the board will receive a printed, uh, copy in February to consider. Then it'll follow the guidelines, at least for ten months of the two thousand twenty sign.
So what you're gonna see is, you're gonna see, um, because Duane's already working on this, because this is no easy undertaking. You're gonna see the fail budget, a column for the fail budget, a column for the pass budget, a column for the modified budget, and then prior year. So it'll, it'll allow the board to really consider everything and to make sure that they can make an informed decision.
Tom, we will be reporting to the, uh, quarterly on the progress of funds that are received from the increase.
And that's, that's the recommended second, uh, motion, uh, for the board to undertake is to report back to the commit, community that, you know, we said six dollars would go here, and two dollars would go here, and to demonstrate with a, with a report that shows, hey, the board is fulfilling their obligation to the community. is fulfilling their obligation to the community.
Okay. Put that on hold. Is there any discussion on this?
I have just one question for clarity. You just said that Ruth directed management to go back and do a budget, did you mean that you directed management to go back and revise the modified budget?
Well, she directed me, and then I directed the staff.
Were there other board members who supported us doing that?
No, she, she directed me.
As was just mentioned, there's basically gonna be three motions as regards to what I term Plan B. I was in favor of Plan A and opposed Plan B, and I just wanna make it clear, and I'm glad that these pieces of the motions have come out to sort of emphasize that. I'm in agreement with, yeah, we, we said we're gonna do this, this, and this, and now we're going to do this, this, and this, motion two, and then we're going to adopt the fee schedule. I believe that the membership spoke loud and clear about moving away from the idea that we're a public first place with members supporting it, to a members' first place where your assessments mean something, very meaningful. And so I was in full support of Plan A, which incorporated all three of those things. As far as Plan B is concerned, I like the fee schedule, I like the process, the policy changes, we're moving back to the privacy idea, but I do not like the zero. I think that it sets a precedent, in my opinion, and I think it just values us too cheap. In my opinion, we are priceless, and we should be priced as such. We all need to support this as a community.
I'd like to call a question on the current motion regarding the $13. We do have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion to increase the monthly assessment from $24 to $37 for approved properties, leaving the monthly assessment for unapproved properties at $16, as proposed? All in favor? Opposed? None opposed?
Did you raise your hand?
I did.
Okay, looking for a motion on number two. Anybody wanna read that one?
Jared?
I can make a motion for that. I make a motion directing management to publish a report on a quarterly basis demonstrating that the assessment increase is being used in the following manner. A $6 increase will go towards eliminating or reducing our current fees. A $2 will go paid for the tuffard or fire, and once all those costs are covered, it will be moved into reserves. C, $4 will go towards operational costs and capital improvements for the future, and D, $1 will go towards building our reserves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a second?
Discussion, not to complicate it, but I agree with the motion, and, but again, the, the numbers you mentioned will be, won't they be 10, 12ths of the 12 months of the year because we're not going to have that rate, or that schedule adopted until March?
I think, Jim, that these are, these are monthly figures, so from March, they go into effect on March 1st, so I think that'll be covered. Any others? Call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Moving on to suggested motion number three. Do I hear a motion?
I vote that we adopt the fee schedule outlined in the 2020 Plan, with this fee schedule remaining the same through December 31, 2022.
A second. Jared? Any discussion on that?
I believe it needs to be a full three years, and this is not. So...
I think it was promoted as the end of 2022 is the way it was promoted, so I believe this, I believe this to be correct.
Yeah, I don't recall, sorry, I don't recall, I have to say it in the marketing series.
The 2020 Plan did indicate through the end of 2022. We assumed it was gonna happen on January 1st, or we hoped it would. It did not. Rather, suggest that we wait till we have a legal opinion.
I'm definitely curious, too, because I do feel like I saw something that said three years, and it worked in a few stickers and I don't feel like I needed that first. And it's only two months, but...
I have no problem in delaying this, because the fee schedule does not kick in until March 1, so we have a little bit of time.
We were gonna be in the marketing, you're in brochure, make sure we're...
And it may be a good idea, but Steve, you kind of touched on this, and maybe we should have had a fourth motion regarding, for member use, member guest use, and to make a motion regarding that, because that was, you know, it's part of the plan that's... But the, the way I wrote this, I say fee schedule, so I don't, I think it'd probably be a good idea to make sure it's absolutely clear. So how about when I bring back this motion, that I bring back an additional motion on You're suggesting all the policy changes that were... No, no. Saying that the lakes are for the use of members and their guests. The, you know, the, the policy changes, or... Yeah, you can make that argument. Okay. That's that. Good one.
That being said, I need a motion to table.
I make a motion to table. The motion to adopt the fee schedule is outlined.
Is there a second?
One.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion? I call for a vote. All in favor?
I do have a question, and I was gonna ask this after this got tabled or approved. Does this affect the reimbursing of some people who paid an annual? Because apparently we're starting to, as of January 15th, I read, we're starting to refund people who had paid for annual at the, at the previous rate versus this rate? Or do we hold up those refunds?
No, I don't think we should, I don't think we need to hold up any refunds. I think that it's very clear that the board is either going to carry this fee schedule through December 31, 2022, or through the end of February, 2023. There'd be no change. I think, you know, we've made a commitment to the membership that we would put, get those refunds out within four weeks, and I think we need to stick with that commitment and not delay that in any way. It was just, just a question, that's all.
Okay, Tom, vote to table is on, on the floor. All in favor of tabling?
Nine to zero.
One other comment on the, on the increase from $24 to $37. It's required legally, a notice will be sent out via mail to every property owner that will be impacted of this increase, and that will be going out before the end of this month. We want to make sure that the board was aware of that.
Okay. One item to take here. Update from the Rules and Regulations Committee?
Okay, on January 8th, starting at 4:30 PM, the Rules and Regulations Committee, which are board members, have their, January 1st committee of this, fiscal regarding this calendar year, and we discussed a number of different things, a number of different policies, a number of different procedures and so on. We're not ready yet at this time to bring any of those before the board, but there'll be some coming before the board in the February meeting. The details of the meeting are included in the pocket. Mainly what we were looking at is, to start out with, is exactly what the Rules Committee is charged with doing. There will be a couple of things that we'll be changing in there. In one that was detailed, the Rules and Regulations Committee has the responsibility to maintain, basically, the government's documents. The committee really does not have that ability to do that, so we're moving that over, or will be presented to the board, to move it over to the Corporate Secretary, because she has access to all of the records and the abilities to make the changes almost instantly as they're being approved and made updates. The other things that we primarily looked at are the items, the policies that need to be changed because of the assessment. One of those that will be coming forward very shortly, it will be on the agenda here in a little bit, and that's the definitions, which basically, at this point, it says that the new activity card and photo ID card will be almost one in the same until the photo ID card expires and the new activity card is in place. There will be the refunds and the credits, whether due, kind of starting March 1. Hopefully, make that a little bit clearer to people. The next meeting is coming up, this Saturday, the 25th, will be right here, starts at 9:00 AM in the morning. Our primary focus on that particular meeting will be the wake and leave issues that are affecting our lakes, our patrons and members that live on the lakes. So if you're interested in any of that, please attempt, it'll be right here. Any questions of the board? We will have a number of changes that will occur, and we're going on forward, and as we figure out all the research and sort of things together, so we see one more of them.
Okay, that, the, in case, I would entertain a motion to change Policy 1.00 about the term "activity card." Anybody make that motion to you?
I think a motion to approve the proposed changes to Policy 1.00, which will incorporate the term "activity card" into our policies. This is the first, it's a part of the meeting.
A second. Jerry Behren? I don't think there's gonna be any discussion, but I might be surprised. Anybody have anything to say?
Yes. Just to clarify, do we need to put in the word "member"? The members are the only ones who can buy these activity cards? Just asking. Members are only, we only sell these to members, to photo IDs. That's it, that's always been...
That's it. Part of our... That was easy. Okay, all in favor of making this change? Person two required to read it. Say aye. What's your answer? Nine to zero. Good.
And for our membership, those who have a photo ID card, that photo ID card will be good until its expiration date. So even though the 2020 Plan kicks in on March 1, if your photo ID card is good until April, April, or May, or what have you, you don't need to race in after March, you can continue to use that. It'll be treated just the same as an activity card, so you don't have to run it. Also, Jim referenced this earlier, and we put out information, if your refund is $10 or more, you will receive a check. If it's under $10, it will be credited to your account. They are already doing that now, and there is even a credit of one cent, and it's going on that person's account. We're crediting everybody. And that will be done as quickly as we can, but we have many, many hundreds to do.
Okay, that brings our attendance to the end. What I have listed, is anybody else that has something that they want to bring up? Okay, in that case, the announcement. The Rules and Regulations Committee meeting, as Jerry said, January 25th, 9 o'clock, right here. Board of Directors GM meeting, Tuesday, February 5th, 4:30 PM, in the boardroom of Country Club, it's a closed meeting. Board of Directors GM meeting, Thursday, February 15th, at 4:30 PM, in the boardroom. That's a closed meeting.
That was February 13th.
What'd I say?
It was 13th, it's on the 13th.
Oh, it better be on February. Yeah, I lost my list, where the rest of it is. That is?
And then the work session is on the 20th of February at 9 AM, and the regular session is on the 27th of February at 6 PM. All those meetings are here in the boardroom.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? A second?
Can I say something? Ask a question, actually, about the stump dump? What are you gonna do with it? And instead of putting the stumps in there, why don't you cut them up and let people take them for their hire places?
Ma'am, if you'd like, I could have a lengthy conversation with you immediately after the meeting and tell you everything that we're doing with the stump dumps, if you'd like.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, and a second. All in favor of adjourn? I, Gary Behren.